To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All members are present except for Director Atkinson and our student rep, Dan Bergen. The first order on the agenda is the open forum. And before we get started, we do have quite a number, I believe, six people that have signed up to speak. So before we get started, I'm going to read the rules for the open forum. In accordance with Policy 203, the board sets aside up to 15 minutes to receive citizen input through an open forum. Input from students, staff, parents, and community members and major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the board. An open forum is an opportunity to address the board. The open forum is a safe space for PLSAS community members to share experiences, concerns, and feedback in accordance with their First Amendment rights. The forum is an opportunity for our community to elevate the conversation, create healthy spaces for dialogue, and demonstrate respect for opposing views so that we can all collectively do better. The open forum rules are as follows. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided, a maximum of three minutes or 15 minutes total, to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board chair. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told his or her privilege of speaking has ended. If you have any handouts or materials for the board, please submit these items in advance to Martha Walz. Members of the public should not approach the dais. The board will not review handouts during public comment, period. Board members will listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community but will not engage individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. Each forum speaker should indicate whether they would like follow-up by administration by the speaker, or if the follow-up administration is necessary. The chair shall request that the superintendent follow up on the matter. After the open forum and when the board chair proceeds with the meeting, the audience's comments are no longer in order. However, board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. Thank you in advance to the speakers and to the audience for respectfully sharing, listening, and being engaged in the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools community. Because we had six speakers, I'm making the call so that we're going to extend the open forum to allow all six speakers to speak. And the first one is Anna Brightenson?
Brennison.
Brightenson? Okay. On the advanced math removal.
Hello. Thank you for listening today. I am here today as I have received zero follow-up from Dr. Edwards nor any board directors on communications sent over two weeks ago. Myself and fellow community members are seeking further clarification on the rationale behind the removal of advanced math courses for sixth, seventh grade students and to understand the impact this will have on those students. As a parent of current and upcoming advanced math students, I find this decision deeply concerning, as do many others in the district, as evident in the community petition with over 320 signatures. I've viewed all study sessions and board meetings, studied Policy 513, spoken to teachers, and briefly spoken to Dr. Edwards, yet our concerns persist regarding the practical implementation of the changes and the limitations of Policy 513, as it has failed countless families I've spoken to over the last eight years. It is nearly impossible to truly differentiate instruction within a 45-minute class with 25 or more students who range from below-grade level learners to advanced learners all at once. We would appreciate examples of how differentiation in instruction will manifest in a classroom and how our teachers will accommodate differentiated instruction when potentially adopting CPM math curriculum that focuses on collaborative instruction and collaborative group work. Our district's mission clearly emphasizes and commits to educating all learners to their full potential. However, the removal of advanced math courses is contradictory to those principles. How are we as a district going to deliver on that mission and commitment if we won't offer students who needed a higher level of instruction? Families in this district can throw a stone in any direction and land on a district that offers advanced math courses at the middle school level. Other districts successfully balance diverse learning needs while offering advanced courses, exemplified by District 196 utilization of Bridges' math curriculum over the last 10 years in elementary classrooms, with continued provision in need for advanced math courses in their middle schools. As an Eastham district, we attract families seeking challenges in mathematics. We risk losing enrollment by neglecting the educational needs of our mathematically inclined students. At a time when our district desperately needs to attract new enrollment, but more importantly, retain its current enrollees, it doesn't seem wise to keep our advanced students from reaching their full potential. This ultimately leads families to look elsewhere where their needs will be met. We are supposed to be a district that prides itself on equity. However, we are not eliminating advanced English, Science, or Social Studies classes. Historically, the average advanced math classes have served 60 to 120 students per grade. How can we call ourselves equitable if we are not offering all of our advanced students course offerings that meet their individual learning needs? I deeply respect, appreciate, and adore our teachers and educational staff. We love our community and our district, but fear that this decision may prompt families like mine to consider alternatives with more comprehensive offerings for our kindergarten through seventh grade gifted and talented students. Again, I am going to request a response from Dr. Edwards with what consultation took place with all of our district math teachers? Were parents surveyed? Was any research viewed on the impacts of students' future growth potential? I am also politely asking the board members for an explanation of how this decision supports our principle, our guiding principles of educating all learners to reach their full potential. And finally, we're asking for this decision to be opened back up to allow further community discussion. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Linda Schmitz. Did I get that right? On the Teaching and Learning Committee.
First off, thank you for allowing me to speak. I never thought I would be the person standing up at a school board meeting fighting for change. I have watched adult bullying within our community, changing narratives, and our community being torn apart by clear agendas of others. However, I never would have expected I would be in the middle of it. I'm a former public school teacher of 10 years, a parent to four kids in the district, actively involved in the community, a tutor to students in our district, and an advocate for public education, especially our teachers. I'm not afraid to be honest and vulnerable and stand up for what is right for students and teachers. I'm also a former Division One athlete who has worked on teams my entire life. I knew that when I was selected to be on the Teaching and Learning Committee that I would be scrutinized and disliked because I would ask the hard questions. I would speak my truth and push the status quo to make change and ultimately stand up to administration for what I believe is broken, as most teachers are afraid to do so. During the December 7th committee meeting, I chose to speak up against Policy 606 regarding inappropriate books that have filled our school libraries. I asked Dr. Edwards about who was involved in the subcommittee that came together to develop the changes to the policy and if parents were involved in this group, as parents often have a different perspective than teachers for what is inappropriate for their child. It is also our parental right to know what is being read to our children. At this meeting, my character was personally attacked by another committee member who stated that I show up only to persecute teachers. Anyone in this community that knows me knows that I'm a huge advocate for teachers to my core. However, when I stated all teachers are like-minded individuals, what I was trying to communicate was that while all teachers want what is best for kids, what they believe is best for kids is different from what parents may think. I was personally bullied in front of a room of about 21 adults, including Dr. Thomas and Dr. Edwards. No one from the administration stopped it. It took a fellow committee member to step up and moderate the situation. After the incident, I decided to approach the individual to apologize and problem-solve together. The interaction lasted about 30 seconds, as shown on camera, and I was aggressively asked to leave by Gus Abdullah and yelled at by the individual. About two hours later, the rumors in town started swirling how I attacked someone in the parking lot. Due to this incident, I was suspended from these meetings until April. I find it incredibly ironic that I am suspended from a public meeting where all members of the community, the people paying the taxes, are supposed to have a voice. Once again, adult bullying is being shown within the community. How do we expect our children to problem-solve when we can't even problem-solve as adults? How can we expect our kids to not bully when as adults we're modeling it? And most importantly, our leaders are being bystanders. How can we speak up against what is wrong when we are continually silenced or suspended? Not only is adult bullying happening in subcommittees, but I've watched our board leaders bully others for different viewpoints. It's embarrassing. Is this what we want to model at the Prior Lake School District? Is this our Prior Lake way? Are we really all in this together or just a select few? How can all community members have a voice when differing opinions are silenced? I'm here to say we must start caring more about what is best for children academically than we care about adults' reputations and agendas. I will continue to be brave to authentically be myself, but most importantly, I will continue to use my voice to speak up against what is wrong. So many of us have parents have stayed quiet, stayed in the background, and have chosen not to get involved. I'm here to tell you that you have awoken a large group of parents that are done with this, and you cannot silence the strong forever. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Shailene Rose on math intervention.
Thank you, School Board, for allowing me to speak. The concerns I'm raising today are regarding math intervention and additional support in our elementary schools. When rolling out a new math curriculum that makes my own heads want to spin, did any of you think about setting aside funding for PARAS support or math intervention to help our struggling students? You have thrown our teachers into this chaos and expect them to adopt this curriculum with no additional support in the classrooms. What organization rolls out a new program to its staff in this capacity and then goes and cuts funding to key positions that would help support the implementation and ongoing critical support for our students and staff? It's absolutely mind-boggling. I was more perplexed when I recently reviewed the presentation for Student Support Services and the proposed cuts for 2024. When we are asked to cut our budgets as leaders in an organization, we must consider the outcome or quality of the product being produced and make cuts to the areas that are not in direct relation to this outcome. In a school district, I would imagine those cuts to be from the top down, not the other way around. Never cut anything that improves the outcome of the product. Never cut teachers, PARAs, programs, special education services, early intervention, and mass advanced curriculum, you name it. If you want a tree to keep growing, you trim the branches furthest away from the trunk, not pull out the roots of what keeps it standing. One thing I believe most parents like me in the Prior Lake District want is so simple. We want our kids of all levels to be able to focus on reading, writing, and math. They are foundational. Parents with gifted and talented children want you to not lower their bar out of the name of equity. Parents with children who are meeting expectations want you to continue to give them opportunities to choose from. Parents like me, whose children don't fit into the bureaucratic rating of an IEP but who are failing foundational subjects like math, want you to give them the support they deserve. And parents with children who qualify for special ed do not want you to take away any more resources than you already have. It's time for our board to stop playing games, arguing over the 203 board operating norms policies, and start focusing on supporting our teachers and our children with intervention services needed. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Rachel Carlson, speaking on gifted and talented.
I'm here again asking the same question. Are we removing gifted and talented opportunities from our district? Actions seem to speak louder than words. I got involved in PLS gifted program advocacy in 2015. I quickly learned that for parents that want gifted education, it will forever be an uphill battle to get our kids what they need to meet their full potential. We are consistently told that we should trust that the district knows and is acting in our children's best interests. Recent changes in curriculum make this difficult. I recall a meeting that was held in 2018 with district leadership to discuss the lack of rigor offered for our students in the middle school back then. We were told at that time that what was offered was enough and that we push our kids too hard academically. This would suggest that as parents, we do not actually know what is best for our children, and this is absolutely false. With the adoption of the new Bridges curriculum, parents of gifted students began getting concerned about what is meant for their children. We were ensured that this new curriculum offered enrichment elements that would adequately challenge our children with deeper understanding of math concepts, and that research showed that speed acceleration may not be the best outcome for students. And that this new curriculum provides more opportunities for students to connect socially with students in their school. Since when did learning math become a lesson in SEL? When asked why there was such a low enrollment in the Sage program last year, fearing that students had indeed lost so much during the years of lockdowns that they are no longer qualifying for Sage, it was explained to me that last school year, 200 second graders had sat for the full COGAT, but invitations into the program were tiered based on acceptance numbers and not to exceed around 30. This makes me wonder how many students were not even offered the opportunity to pursue Sage that qualified. This brings up the question of whether our district supports gifted children and their needs. Now researching the new middle school curriculum, CPM, I came across far more negative reviews of this curriculum than positive. In fact, for a curriculum that was developed in 1989, I was shocked that most positive reviews came from the CPM website and not independent sources. Also, while searching the CPM website for any data to support it and that it will indeed improve our children's math proficiency, I came across information that made me question our district's reasoning for selecting it. Newsletters explaining that getting the right answer is perfectionism and that math is not equitable. How is asking a child for ways that a company can reduce its carbon footprint deepening their understanding of math concepts? Math is a way to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills. If there is no right answer, then there is no problem. So what exactly are they learning? I would like to know the following. Who was involved in selecting CPM for piloting and why was it selected? Were parents informed of this change before their children began the school year? And are we removing one of the differentiation specialists because we no longer have a gifted track for children, so no longer need the differentiation? Thank you.
Next is Heather Roscoe, speaking on book reviews.
My name's Heather Roscoe, and I've been a district resident for going on 28 years. This year, I've had two children in Prior Lake schools. I want to thank you first for your continued emphasis on transparency this year. For me, transparency is especially critical when it comes to Policy 606, which outlines the process for how decisions are being made that directly impact our students' constitutional right to access information, including access to books in the media center. The district's intent to be transparent with Policy 606 is clear with the statement that the review committee follows open meeting law. I, for one, have been grateful to attend these meetings. My observation is that all attendees have been extremely respectful. Attendees have shared how grateful they are, both for the thorough discussions that take place during these reviews, and especially for the knowledge and expertise our media specialists and teachers bring to these conversations. I know that as a board and as administrators, the tendency might be to try and keep these challenges under wraps, maybe believing that the lack of attention will lessen the interest in or number of book challenges. However, evidence from other districts across the country, as well as districts here in Minnesota, lead me to believe that book challenges are not going away anytime soon. Some districts are fielding hundreds of book challenges. The time is now, I think, to shine a light on these challenges and make sure that our community is aware that these challenges are taking place. As you review Policy 606, I encourage you to aim towards increased transparency. In addition to following open meeting law, I encourage you to include guidance for publicly sharing formal challenges with the community prior to the review meeting. Community members should be made aware and have the opportunity to understand the rationale behind the committee's decisions. These decisions directly impact what resources are available to our kids. Ultimately, the community should be informed when decisions are being made that impact our students' right to access reading material. I also hope the decision-makers consider provisions in Policy 606 to allow the district discretion should the number of book challenges become burdensome. It is clear from attending the committee meetings that participants invest time and careful consideration for these challenges, and they come at a cost to both the participants and the district. Given that fiscal responsibility is incumbent on the school board, Policy 606 should include reasonable limitations for book challenges. Finally, I firmly believe that kids deserve access to literature that inspires and reflects them. Please know that you, our trained media specialists, and our teachers have the support of the community as you find ways to support our students' right to read. I ask that you please keep this in mind as you review Policy 606 over the coming weeks. Thank you.
Next up and last is Charles Johnson on social media.
Good evening, Chair Franz, Superintendent Thomas, and members of the board. If you recall, last year, some community members read some rather explicit content found in the school libraries. You then discussed the district's process for challenging, reviewing, and potentially removing inappropriate books from our libraries. Recently, a book entitled "The Hate U Give" was challenged because some concerned parents believed this book was inappropriate and should not be in our middle school libraries. The book went through the review process and was determined to be acceptable. Did you know that if a movie gets an R-rated rating, it could have three F-bombs? That means that someone under the age of 17 must be required to be accompanied by an adult. That book has 100 F-bombs, among other adult themes, and our school district said, "We're okay with 11- to 13-year-olds checking it out from our library." After the review process, a district employee publicly posted a picture with the book and proclaimed, quote, "This book is saying on our middle school shelves today. I call that a big win for the day," and goes on to say, "Thank you to all the people that came to support me." The district employee certainly celebrated that parents who were concerned enough to follow the review process, parents who maybe did everything they could to extend their child's innocence just a couple more years, and parents who care, were defeated. There's no humility, appreciation for the parents. This employee rejoiced that these parents and their values were lost to those of educators. Such behavior must be seriously addressed. District staff are to partner with parents, not be their opponents. We all want what is best for every child in our district, implying that someone won means someone lost. If sides are drawn, the students lose. We must work together as parents, teachers, and district employees to improve our district for my kids, your kids, and every student in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our open forum. Next on the agenda is, I'm looking for a motion, a first and a second to approve the agenda. So made. By Director Crosby.
Second.
By Director Velazquez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes 6-0. Next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following: the financials, purchase orders above $25,000, monthly financial report, the board minutes from January 8th and the 22nd, and personnel items. And those personnel items include the announcement of the retirement of Hidden Oaks Principal Sasha Kuznetsov after 18 years of service. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So made. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes 6-0. Okay. Dr. Thomas, would you like to?
Thank you, Chair Franz and members of the board. I just wanted to bring notice that we have our retirement, as you heard Chair Franz mention. Sasha from our Hidden Oaks Middle School is retiring after this school year, and he has spent many years providing leadership and support to many students and families throughout our community. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank him for his years of service, for the many lives that he has touched and supported as being that bridge to allowing kids to pursue college career or just be life-ready. And so, on behalf of all of our staff here in the district, I just want to say thank you, and we really appreciate him and wish him well, being grandpa, and everything else that he wants to do in life. And he has assured me he is a phone call away, so he's on my short list for substitutes if we have leaves or anything like that from an administrative standpoint. So thank you so much, Sasha, for everything that you do, that you've done, and we wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Kay. Next is Laker Pride. I'm sorry. No, next we have the acceptance of gifts. And we have one gift from the TAG Worker family, did I pronounce that right, for $500 donated to the Westwood Enhanced Programming. So first I need a motion and a second. So made. By Director Bullion, second.
Second.
By Director Velazquez. Okay, this is a roll call vote. We'll start with Director Olstad.
Aye.
Director Cosby.
Aye.
Director Burnett.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director Velazquez.
Aye.
And that's aye, so that's 6-0. And next we have Laker Pride. And the first item is to do a review on Live More, Screen Less by Scott Peterson and Zachary Johnson.
So I'll have Scott and Zach come forward. And as they're coming forward, I'll just share with the board and our community that we actually, last year, started looking at the impacts of cell phones at the middle school and how we might be able to change some of the practices and protocols. And both Dr. Edwards and I have actually met with staff members there who really thought it would be important to increase their efforts in this current school year that we're in. And so, through their leadership and that of several others, we've enhanced our supports for ways that we can address the cell phones in our schools and really allowing for this to be a grassroots initiative, kind of co-conspirated or co-conspired with our students at the table as well. So they have ownership from the very beginning. So I'm going to allow Zachary and Scott to give us an update as to where we're at with our work with Live More and Screen Less this year.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Zach Johnson. I'm the dean of students at Twin Oaks Middle School this year. And so, Scott and I are just going to kind of tank team this, give you kind of this idea of what we've been doing and where we've gone so far this year. So Live More, Screen Less is a local twin cities organization that's focused on digital well-being in schools. So they really have started out kind of giving schools that opportunity of what can we do to help support kids, not only in like the practices that we're doing as a school, but in like the mindsets that we help kids develop for their own digital well-being throughout their lives. So Live More, Screen Less defines digital well-being as balanced, intentional, and responsible use of technology. If you've been in either of our middle schools, you maybe have seen some of those posters up. We put those up right at the beginning of the school year and had that as a conversation point with students, teachers, and families as well. The goal of Live More, Screen Less, and our goal this year, has really been to educate our staff to facilitate conversations with students about their device use so that they can reflect on that own digital well-being, get the students to start thinking about what things am I doing in my life, both in school and out of school, to keep myself in that state of well-being, right? So our journey with this began in August when we met with the Live More, Screen Less staff. They have quite a crew that we meet with a couple times a month to learn about the program. Zach and I went through the education and the training to become Live More, Screen Less champions. Anytime we had a question, the crew at Live More, Screen Less was there to meet with us, guide us through their way, troubleshoot any questions or any problems that we might have. We recruited staff to participate in trainings. We worked with Dr. Jenny Zumbusch to develop staff surveys, implement those staff surveys, and then review that data with our building administrators. We held focus group meetings with students to gain their perspective on what Live More, Screen Less was about. In addition, we tried to share the message from Live More, Screen Less with our weekly parent newsletters. We would include little blurbs, posters and such that they had presented to us, and we'd share that with families as a way to potentially open up the discussion when parents read that, ask their kids like what it'd mean for them at home or what it'd mean for them at school. So part of our contract with Live More, Screen Less was educating our staff. And so that was really, came down to two modules that we did. They were online modules that led staff through their training. So one of them is called Get Activated. Get Activated, we had about 30 staff involved in that. That included teachers, that included building administration, support staff, like counselors, social workers, and then it included district leadership as well. So I know Dr. Thomas was part of that as well, going through and doing that Get Activated training, which really was activating the mindset that we wanted our staff and eventually our students to have. And then, the next part was this Get Equipped training. And the Get Equipped training was to help train our teacher champions And the Get Equipped training was to help train our teacher champions to facilitate conversations with students. So we had ten staff members between our two campuses that were involved in that Get Activated training. And then those teacher champions, along with Scott and myself, facilitated conversations with students around that digital well-being. So we had lots of different people involved and lots of different people in having their hands in the training process.
At that point, Zach and I met with student groups. We used our caring and compassionate conversation group to hold our discussions, to hear the feedback from students on what they thought about Live More, Screen Less was about. Our teacher champions utilized their advisories and went to other advisories just to hold focus groups, to talk to the kids, present them some information, and then gather feedback in the form of exit tickets. Approximately five to ten percent of the middle school campus student body would have had a teacher talk to them about this to give us some data, to give us the feedback that we needed at this point.
And then just to kind of give you an idea of what our current reality is, you know, at the middle school level, our device use policy, our personal device use policy, is that we don't have students using devices during the academic time of the day. So anytime class is going on, we expect students' devices, whether it be cell phones, smartwatches, AirPods, to be away unless a teacher allows them to use it during that time. That would include not just in the classroom, but outside of the classroom during that time. So if they're in a pod area, if they're in a hallway working on something else, those devices need to be put away. We do allow them to have it out during passing time and then during lunchtime as well. So that's kind of what our current reality looks like at the middle school.
At this time, Zach and I are here if you have any quick questions that we could answer.
Thank you very much. Board directors, any questions?
What were some of the conversations or subject matter in those? I mean, there's a lot you can cover, right, with responsibility with cell phones and things like that? Like, what kinds of things were you discussing with the students by the time you got to Get Equipped?
Yep. It was very superficial with the time constraints that we had. Just kind of what did it mean when you were on the screen? How did it maybe impact you in the moment when you were with friends or with your classmates or with family? And what other options maybe could you have had? And so it spurred on the thinking for a lot of students to just open up their minds and open up their comments to, if they wanted to keep doing that, maybe staring at a screen or put a screen down and engage in a conversation with other people. And I would say a lot of the conversation was really around how students were feeling with their device use, whether it being like they're connected to social media outside of school, gaming, how late they're up, and a lot of reflection from students on that piece of it. What are they doing with it outside of school? How is it making them feel personally? And do they feel connected to their peers when they're doing it over a screen? So I think that was pretty the big topic that was covered.
So how are they feeling?
You know, it's kind of across the board, right? You get a middle school student in there, if you've worked with a thirteen, twelve, thirteen-year-old, some of them get it, some of them are willing and mature enough to have that conversation. Some of them say, "You should just let us use our phones whenever we want to." So I think it's kind of that, you get both sides of it.
So what's the impact been so far in the classroom as a result of the training and then also the personal device use policy implementation?
That's a really good question. Some of our teacher champions have led initiatives such as device-free lunches or tech-free Tuesdays, that they do that on their own. And they have, individually, they report them to be very successful. As far as Zach and I's role this year, without a very clear policy set forth in the middle school, you can't have it during the academic time, we don't spend as much time working with it, which has been great.
Outstanding. Thank you.
I have a question. So we started this program last year and at a limited way. Did we get any feedback from parents or kids that actually led into the decisions that are going on this year with the Live More, Screen Less and the way we're implementing this? The lessons learned, in other words, from the limited implementation of at least one grade level and limited cellphone use from the previous year, from the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year?
We did not have any feedback in the previous years, no.
Okay. Was there any, has there been any feedback this year from parents?
At this time, there has not been. So we're just kind of at an update right now. Mid-February, here's where things are at. We are still meeting with Live More, Screen Less. I think we have our next meeting might even be this week, where we touch base and we see what other things can we or should we be doing? And reaching out to parents is certainly something that is on the table.
Thank you very much.
You talked about the goal being a balanced approach and shared in the middle schools what, how the teachers are handling that. I'm just wondering, is there consistency across the board? So every teacher, whatever they're teaching, they have no technology during the academic time? That is across the board in the middle schools? Is that?
That's the expectation, and I would say, you know, do we know what's happening in every classroom? No, right? Like, we can't be in every classroom. I would say from the Twin Oaks perspective, I've been really impressed with each grade level being very consistent across the board. And we give them the opportunity to monitor that, you know, as they see fit. But I've been, consistency for sure across eighth grade, seventh grade, and sixth grade, with those overall expectations being the same for everybody.
Is there anything that you would say, support-wise, that you would be looking for, even, you know, policy-wise or, you know, is there something that you see that you would ask for support in implementing the? Because it is a major distraction. I mean, we can hear that from middle school, high school. I don't think maybe as much in elementary, in the elementary schools. But it is a severe distraction. And so is there any supports that you could see would be helpful to put in place?
You know, at this time, that's where we'll look to our building administrators to reach out to you guys and open up that, have that open dialogue and to see if you guys would like to work collaboratively to put one together.
Thank you.
That was kind of, that was kind of where I was headed to and almost more from like a budget standpoint. I mean, I think we all would agree that social media is impacting our kids, our families, our homes. How do we get tools to deal with that, right? Like, we all want to get better educated. So I would be interested probably further down the road, how, to know how helpful Live More, Screen Less has been and if that is the, you know, who we should partner with from a financial standpoint and a support standpoint. And then also, you know, we're not involved in the day-to-day decisions, but we're involved in a lot of the budgetary decisions that supports that. So if it's working, right? If it's worth it, great. Yeah, that kind of feedback I'd be interested in.
Okay.
I'll just close by saying that, you know, when I took the training, we, superintendents have been having this conversation about the impacts of cell phones specifically in schools and how do we manage that in a kind of post-necessary environment? And the level of dependence that has been growing. I think also the mental health issues that we are seeing coming out from doctors and, you know, various industries saying we really need to look at how we can address this. And so it's been something in my conversation spaces. I will say that the training is very compelling. I don't know if anyone could go through that training without being phased by something that says we have to do something. So it will be something that we'll talk with more explicitly at the administrative level as to how we perhaps maybe make that training more readily available, because it is a very compelling argument for needing to do something different. And I just appreciate the two of you for leading this initiative at our middle school campus and want to recognize you this evening and just your contributions to making our learning communities more connected to the, what I always say, the original technology, and that is the human relationship. So thank you both, and I have a couple of certificates for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A paparazzi. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a special PLSAS School Board recognition for Director Enrique Velazquez. So I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas to hand this, to give this or award this to Director Velazquez and explain what it's for.
So in the spirit of School Board Recognition Month, we've got a few things that I'll cover. I was going to save this one for the end, but now the cat's out of the bag, so no putting it back. That's all right.
I was supposed to build up to this?
We're going to build up to it, but it's here. So Director Velazquez is recognized by the Minnesota School Boards Association for the 2024 Directors Award for successfully earning 100 points from MSBA-sponsored sessions to improve your individual governing performance. And so we just want to thank you for, this is the equivalent of taking additional classes, CEUs, et cetera, so deepening your knowledge, and it's a significant investment given the fact that you are essentially volunteering your time in addition to a full-time job, full-time dad, full-time hubby, all that, and you're still finding time to invest in yourself as a board governor or a board director. So congratulations on behalf of the Minnesota School Boards Association for the 2024 Directors Award.
Congrats Enrique.
Congrats Enrique.
And I will continue the conversation this evening to recognize our entire board. You all give tirelessly of yourselves to work that is extremely consequential. You are setting forth policy, you're setting forth budget, and also curriculum, everything to really help provide the conditions for our students to thrive and get all the skills that they need to graduate and go off to chase their dreams. And each of you play such a significant role. You have very unique personalities, but together as one body have the strength that can really move a mountain. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of all the administration and staff throughout our district for all the work that you do here in our district as well as what you heard with Director Velazquez. Many of you are also committing to those additional time, service hours, et cetera. You're on committees, not just within our district, but you're on state-level committees, legislative action committees, and you name it, you're showing up. So thank you so much for being a voice for our community and bringing our community's voice to a lot of different areas that you are interacting with. And so I have not only a certificate of appreciation for, from all of us here in the district, but also you each receive one from the Minnesota School Board Association in honor of your service and recognition for being a board director. So I have two certificates for each of you to recognize all the great work that you do. So thank you so much. Thank you so much. And I'm going to, hold on one second, let me pass these to you. And you know you're all going to have to stand forward as well, so you might as well just join me up front.
We already did a picture earlier. What about one with Enrique?
You don't want to have the cheesy certificates, and I think you all should join us up front in one big picture.
Just please, please.
What about one with Enrique just alone?
Well, we can do that one too.
Enrique.
Yes, congrats.
And I have certificates for Director Atkinson, and we also have one. I got two of them for Director Atkinson, and then I have one of our local, for our student rep, Dan, who's not here this evening, and I'll get to them as well. And that is our Laker Pride for this evening.
So next up, I want to hand it over to Executive Director of Administrative Services Herman to present the PLSA 2023 to 2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement. And before we get started, can I ask for a motion? So made. Okay, by Director Olstad and Director Crosby.
Thank you, Chair Franz, and members of the board. We're presenting today on behalf of the Certified Staff Negotiations Committee the recommendation to propose, or to approve the proposed terms and conditions for the PLSA contract as outlined in the memo in the packet that was within the board parameters provided at 9.74%.
Can I do one more thing after I had the motion? Can I do a vote, all in favor, after the first and second motion? Do I do? Aye? For the motion? Aye. Opposed? No? Okay, six-zero. Sorry. I missed that. All right, and then Director Herman already that, so. Director Herman, can you go through the various changes or conditions that we're discussing?
Yes. Chair Franz, as outlined in the memo in the board packet, the salary enhancements includes year one step and lane movement with a 1% COLA and adjustment to any step that was to move up to at least a minimum of a 1.5% increase. And year two, step and lane movement with a 3.4% COLA with adjustment to any step movement to a minimum of a 1.5% increase. Enhancements to longevity in year one add $500 to each tier of longevity. In year two, add $500 to each tier of longevity. There's enhancements to the wellness incentive, expansion of the National Board Certification, enhancements to the post-employment benefits, addition to remote work on staff workday language, language adjustments to the children's educate, or teachers and parent educator article, and additional language cleanup items, which include things like changes in titles and dates and things along those lines.
Are there any questions?
No, I, I'll just, I want to say thank you to the leadership team for many, many hours of work on this and also thank you to the union leadership for also putting in a lot of work and effort to come together. These are not easy conversations. They're really hard things to do, and I'm appreciative to be here tonight to support this.
I would just like to say that I've looked at a lot of contracts in my time, and I want, first of all, I know that how hard everyone worked on this. It was grueling. There was a lot of emotion, and I appreciate everyone coming through with this. And I also want to add that the language in this contract is the cleanest I've ever seen. We've been slowly but surely picking up a lot of the MOUs and putting them into their contract language or resolving them. And this one is really a hard-worked-on contract that is very clean, very easy to understand. And just reflects the combined work of both the union and the district administration. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
I echo that. Thank you to everybody involved. It was a lot. Thank you.
Chair Franz and Board Directors, I also just want to echo all of what was just said here this evening and really want to thank our here this evening, and I really want to thank our union leadership, our district leadership as well, for the hours and time put in. It was a real course that we had to take of trying to get to where we're at today, and I know it doesn't always come easy, and I just really want to show my appreciation for our ability to have this this evening, and also for our ability to look forward into how we continuously improve our practices and processes, and how we show up as leaders and staff in our district to ensure that what we are doing is supportive of all of our employees, as well as all of our students, and ultimately for the broader community. So thank you so much.
Okay, so now I'm going to take a vote on the contract for ready. We did, I know, but we did it prematurely, and I should have done it after the discussion. So can you humor me, and let's do another one, just to make sure it's formal? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six zero. Thank you. All right, so next, we're going to go into our new business items, and the first item on the agenda is the FastBridge data report. Director Zombush, Director of Assessment and Improvement. It's all yours.
Good evening Director Franz, members of the board, Superintendent Thomas. I'm here to give a mid-year data review of our FastBridge data, which is our kind of very quick dipstick measure of how students are doing in the middle of the year. We also had an early release focused on our mid-year data to talk about growth. This is a, I know I've mentioned this before, it's a unique opportunity for us to look at how students are growing throughout the course of the year and make mid-year adjustments for the second half of the year. This is kind of the only opportunity to do that. So we really took staff through a structured data protocol to look at data for their mid-year FastBridge data. We've had this on a number of documents, but just a review of our data beliefs in that, this is from Dr. Thomas, you know, our, the data is not necessarily going to answer all of our questions, it may bring up additional questions, and we'll do our best to answer anything that, any questions that you do have, and that there's, this is a single data point. So just keeping in mind that this is one very quick assessment on student progress that is not all-encompassing of what that student is able to do. FastBridge is a screener, and we give it three times a year at the elementary level. The, the core content areas in math and reading are the main, are the data I'm going to go over tonight. Before I go over the math data, I know I've also talked about this quite extensively as we've gone through the math implementation. It's very common to see an implementation dip in data, which we were predicting based on the math implementation, that things kind of have to get worse before they get better. That's just allowing teachers and staff enough time to get familiar with materials and students. We know that the math curriculum is a very different way of thinking about mathematical concepts, so we would, we would predict that this would happen with full implementation being about three years out. The goal is really to reduce the amount of time and the amount that the data does dip during implementation. Given all of that, we actually don't see a huge dip in math. We see a little bit in kindergarten here. Just to orient you to these charts, and it's a little different for kindergarten, first grade than compared to the other ones, but on the, basically, the horizontal line indicates anything above that would be a student who is not at risk in this content area, and then below that line would be students that were, are at some risk or high risk. And so you can see the left bar is where we started in the fall with the students, and then the right bar is where we are currently in the winter. So the goal generally would be to keep, you know, in general, the number and percentage of students the same or de, or increasing on top of the bar. So trying to decrease as much as possible those students at risk on the bottom. So here you can see our kindergarten class came in very high, 86% of students were at the, at no risk in the fall screener. That is down a little bit to 78%. Here in first grade, it's about even. Again, we were expecting kind of a dip, and so, yeah, that 76 to 75 is pretty much, I don't think that would be statistically significant, so about steady in first grade here. We actually saw a big jump in second grade, so we started the year with 71% of students in math without any risk categories, and now we're up to 79 without any of those risks. So we saw that eight percentage point there in second grade. Third grade is about even. I also wanted to point out in the bottom left, I have the number of total students screened over the total number of students in that grade level. There are certain students that are not screened on time based on absences or other pieces, you know, the mobility, things like that. We do try and make up all of those, so this was pulled about a week ago for the board packet, but over time, we hope to get almost all kids screened. And sometimes we just, you know, the systems aren't all lined up, or, you know, a student misses extended periods. But for the most part, you know, we're seeing that our students are getting systematically screened here. Fourth grade, we saw a little bit of an increase, two percentage points, and then fifth grade, down two percentage points. So overall, to me, the story is that things are pretty stable in terms of math, which I think is a good thing, considering we were kind of anticipating that dip. So hopefully, things continue to go in the right direction, and teachers, again, had a, a lot of structured, structured time to be able to reflect on this and figure out what's working and things that they want to adjust for the second half of the year. At the time that I pulled this, we did not have enough middle school data to pull. They're just a little bit behind on their timeline. There was less than two-thirds of the data populated, so I don't have that displayed here. And then the high school is going to administer this in the spring. As for reading, we have not screened our kinder, kindergartners yet. For those of you that recall, last year, we identified a timing misalignment between the assessment and the scope and sequence of our foundations curriculum. So based on teacher feedback, we have delayed the winter screening window for kindergarten students so that they can get the instruction that is assessed on the FastBridge winter assessment before they take the assessment. Again, that was a teacher-driven change that we implemented last year from a small pilot that we did. So we will, we don't have that data yet because the kindergartners are currently working on that content. Here in first grade, same idea here for reading. You can see the percentage of students at risk at the bottom and not at risk on the top, so we had some improvement there from fall to winter in first grade. Saw something similar there in second grade, and then a little dip in third grade. As we go into our older levels, we'll see some declines, fourth and fifth, and then for middle, middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth. This piece also, obviously, it's something we want to address, but it's not something that is completely unanticipated, because when we look at the Read Act and the science of reading and the information that we have in terms of our reading curriculum, we have purchased the foundations and implemented foundations, which is a foundational literacy skill-building curriculum at the lower grades. We don't have the component yet that we will need down the road for the Read Act to implement the vocabulary and comprehension component, and how to bridge the foundational skills with that, those more advanced comprehension and vocabulary skills. So that will be something over the next year, as we work with our literacy committee, we'll be working on curriculum resources to support that other component of literacy instruction that we need to have implemented per the Read Act. And then, I already mentioned this, we implemented this last year where FastBridge family reports were sent home prior to conferences. This allows just more data in the hands of families, and for families to come to conferences with any questions they might have about their individual student and their progress, and then the plan for the second half of the year with their students. And then I'm happy to answer questions, and then if there's anything curricular as well, Dr. Edwards can also come and answer any questions.
I have a question regarding FastBridge being one of the data points, and it is mainly elementary, is that correct mainly?
It's, it's all grades.
It is all grades? All the way through the high school?
We just introduced it at the high school this year. It wasn't previously used at the high school, and so that's why we're only doing two points at the high school this year. It's brand-new. Last year, we piloted it within the special education students at the high school to kind of get more details on their academic trajectory, and now we have it implemented across, but we just needed a little bit more time to do the three times a year at the high school. But we did do it in the fall at the high school, so we're all the way through.
I guess to expand on my question, FastBridge being a data point for how students are doing, we also use MCAs. I'm not quite sure what that other, if there's other things that we use as data points. Is FastBridge something that is reported to MDE as well, like, like MCAs? Is that, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, it is shared often that there's multiple data points, and, and sometimes it's hard to use one set of data point to have a good overall picture, and I, I don't disagree with that at all. I think anytime when we're looking at things and we see decline, especially in reading and math, with the implementation of the, the Bridges program, I did go to one of the math and information nights because, just because it's hard to grasp what students are seeing if I, if I don't know. So that was really informative for me, but just trying to, when we see, when we see decline, you know, there's concern. And so I guess for me, as a parent first, and then as a board member, when we're looking at these different data points, it's, I guess I get confused on, you know, what are the next steps? Sometimes it's time that we just have to, you know, with new implementation, new programs, new curriculum, we have to maybe wait to see how they bounce back. But with reading, I don't believe that there has been any new implementation, so to see decline there is concerning. I don't know.
Director Polian, if I-
If any of my question makes sense, or not.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the question, and let me just speak to a couple of things, and then I'll probably ask Dr. Edwards to talk a little bit about our early release dates and how that structure, how this data has really shaped that structure. I, I would say, think of, think of MCA data as the check engine light coming on in your car, and think of FastBridge data being it's time to change your oil reminder in your car. If you don't change your oil in a timely fashion, you could really destroy the engine. And by the time that check engine light comes on, it's very costly to address whatever that is typically. I use that as maybe a different metaphor for folks to understand why we use certain data and why it's so important to look at multiple sets of data, because if we only looked at MCAs, it's too late, the check engine light is on. And if we only look at, you know, that oil light and never bother to say, hey, is the check engine light off? Because that's what we want, that would be like proficiency. So it's a both-and conversation for us, and our teachers need this formative data so that they can begin to make adjustments to their instruction. And I'll just be honest with you, when we look at the reading data, so the math data is something that we've known for some years that we needed to get a new math curriculum, which is why we've implemented our new math curriculum this year, and really have done well, our staff, to help mitigate the natural dip. It's kind of like when you get a transplant, your body might initially reject it until it kind of adjusts to this new organ in your body. And, and so once you get through that, and it kind of calibrates, you, we're good to go. Same with the new math curriculum, and, and the fact that our dip didn't go as low as we projected, I think that shows signs of promise, and so, you know, and to, to what Director Zombush talked about, as our students and our staff acclimate to this new curriculum that's within us, we'll find ways to get that rhythm going so that there'll be that natural progression of, of increase in proficiency. With regards to the reading, the early, the early literacy foundations shows that it's actually working. It's, it's actually doing what it's supposed to be doing, and when we look kind of longitudinally, quasi-longitudinally, with our fourth grade cohort, that's the cohort, that's the inaugural cohort of foundations, and they have shown fairly consistent, consistently from kindergarten, their natural progression year over year over year. What we are seeing now in fourth grade, and that's the cohort that I'm referencing, two things, two things that we're watching. One, K through three, kids are learning to read. That's that early literacy component. When kids move into fourth grade and those intermediate levels of elementary, they are now reading to learn. And, and so that's a natural shift in rigor for the individual. It's also a shift in literacy accountability from an instructional standpoint, because now they have to apply those reading skills to interact cross, across multiple levels of content. The, in what you see here in, in the data, is our fourth grade cohort does not, and, and beyond, they do not have two-thirds of a comprehensive reading curriculum. They only have one-third, and that's the early literacy component. So the, if you look at reading research, kids who perform really well are kids who have vast and rich vocabulary. It's usually the kids since birth have been being read to or being exposed to thousands of words, and they're developing that depth of knowledge. And I would partner that with a lot of life experiences to apply that knowledge and that vocabulary. In addition to that, they are missing the comprehension component of, of an overall literacy curriculum. And we did not have resources to buy a comprehensive curriculum. And so when you don't have the comprehension piece, let's just focus on kind of fluency and comprehension. That means, how quickly can I read through something, but how much do I actually retain? And, you know, and, and it's a balance. You have to be able to get through content at a reasonable pace, but you also have to be able to retain that so that you can recall what you've learned and apply it in future contexts. And comprehension is a significant component to an overall literacy curriculum. So I think this really begs to question for us as a district, our value proposition of the ability to go out and buy a comprehensive curriculum, reading curriculum, because we can see the early literacy component is solid, the two-thirds that's not in, in, in existence, and it will be, and this is actually not just about us, this is why we have the Read Act that came across this last legislative cycle. It's a state problem. So we need, and, and the state right now is going through the vetting and the approval of kind of prescribed reading, science, research-based reading curricula that the state would approve. And so that's, that's why we are looking at the data that we see in our intermediate and beyond. And I'll turn it to Dr. Edwards if there's something that I've left out prior to me coming in, but generally, when I look at data, this is the story that I'm seeing and what I'm hearing from our staff.
Yeah, I'll pick up there and just speak to, definitely would reiterate all that you just said around the elements of a complete literacy curriculum that we are going to be, and we just launched our reading implementation team just last week, might have been actually the week prior, February 1st, and we'll be rolling that out here this, throughout the spring. We'll be bringing an update, anticipating, I think- We'll be bringing an update, anticipating, I think, April study session with the board and sharing a little bit more comprehensively about the science of reading and those elements that Dr. Thomas referenced, those additional elements beyond the phonics and phonemic awareness. So that definitely is to come and we'll be, we've got that team assembled of staff. The other point of emphasis I was going to make and you had set this up before you spoke about the reading, about early release, and I just want to emphasize that our work to date around the early release time that was, we've been able to implement this year on a monthly basis. We've focused the first half of our time around the math implementation because we knew the heavy lift associated with that. Much of our time, particularly at the elementary level, was dedicated to that in terms of making sure that our staff, we utilize that available time to get them the training to implement the new math curriculum. And as this particular slide that's up here points out that on early release, the February 7th one, just last week, we took a look at this data. But I also wanted to add a mention about how now the high school is utilizing FastBridge and when we did so this fall, so it would have been in the November and December early release days and in learning teams subsequently between those days. I heard many references from our administrative team and our peer coaches at the high school level, how teachers at the high school level now having this data in front of them as an indicator of where their students were at was quite eye-opening and helpful to plan lessons, to plan instruction, to look at assessments and understand more fully their students in front of them. Because obviously, as Dr. Thomas pointed out, the reading to learn is across all content areas, particularly as our students progress through our system and becomes increasingly more important as they move into the upper elementary and on to the secondary level. So this data is really important to us as well as the upcoming work and as much as our focus and attention on early release time this year has been around the implementation of math curriculum, that same level of focus will be coming next year as we move forward and hopefully in subsequent years as well. Our professional development time around training our teachers in the science of reading and the aspects and components of that, this is really a multi-year plan that we need to be embarking on.
So my follow-up question to the READ Act and implementation of vocabulary and comprehensive reading instruction and curriculum, how is the funding behind that at the state level?
There's not funding associated with that mandate and that's the challenge. So right now, in this last legislative session, when we talk about some of the under and/or non-funded mandates, this would be a significant one. I think you all can appreciate what was entailed as well as our staff, the amount of time and effort to embark in a new math curriculum and the resources that it took. Not only the financial resources for the actual materials, but the ongoing professional development investment for staff, for students, eventually when we have the parent component as well with these parent nights that Director Bullion referenced, or Vice Chair Bullion referenced, we have the equivalent, if not greater, with the READ Act. This is a real challenging point for every district that I'm in contact with and I think on our legislative agenda, we made it very clear that, and I think other professional agendas as well, fund the unfunded mandates from last cycle and do not add more unfunded mandates in this cycle. Having conversations with a variety of our electives on, you know, both Democrat and Republican, I think the unanimous feel is they're going to have to have some tough conversations of can everything that came out of last session remain on the plate or will they repeal some things? Because there are so many unfunded or underfunded requirements that are really putting districts in a compromised position and so this would be probably one of our bigger ones.
If I may jump in and add a little bit of additional historical context locally here to that conversation, as well as a couple of clarifications with regard to the legislative session as we've continued to learn more about the components and MDE has learned more in rolling out what we're going to be looking at. So first of all, from a historical perspective, it was, it had been for quite some time and I don't, I'm going to say eight to 10 years, that the curriculum budget associated with our local curriculum budget was, hadn't, had gone unchanged. And when we invested this past year in our math curriculum, we were able to utilize some of our remaining Esser dollars to make that become a reality. So as we built the budget for this year, knowing that we have this significant investment on the horizon that is going to be needed, that I'll say is underfunded and I'll get back to describing that just a little bit further, we know we had to invest, we know we had to reserve resources. So we're, I don't want to go too far into this part of the conversation because it's going to come up in our budget reduction conversation later in our agenda here, but as we looked, as I looked at the department budgets that I oversee, I could not foresee making reductions in the area of resources, i.e. curriculum. So the reductions that you're seeing and will be speaking about later tonight are more personnel-related because we had to maintain the level of funding that we were able to realize in this current cycle year and frankly, in the previous year as well, to meet the needs from a curricular standpoint, to have the resources in front of our students and our teachers. And then I want to just go just a little bit further on the unfunded piece of it. As MDE is continuing to, has come out with some approved curricular resources for a balanced literacy curriculum. However, we've heard in our conversations with representatives from MDE that the amount of money that was earmarked, they said districts can be reimbursed if they purchase these curricular resources tied to these specific programs. The amount of reimbursable monies available is not nearly the cost of implementing. They just did not reserve enough money. So unfunded mandate is the point of emphasis I want to make. Under, yes, underfunded mandate is the point of emphasis I'd like to make there.
For the, sorry, for the READ Act specifically?
Correct, for the, for the balanced literacy curricular resources that, and in order to be eligible, you have to adopt one of the approved, but again, eligible for a very small pot of money, which probably don't anticipate a district such as ours potentially receiving. If I may be a forecast that a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the context.
Questions? I just had one question. These FastBridge reports that go out to the families, how granular are those reports?
They're, they're, they're really, they are designed for families. It's a component of FastBridge reporting that is a family report, so it gives the overall information of the student's trajectory over time and then it kind of breaks down each of the components in a way that's very clearly laid out for the family to be able to look at it. It's not granular in the sense, like if your, if your student is receiving intervention and they're getting benchmarked throughout the course of the year, that would not be reflected on those family reports. That would be something that the teacher would present during conferences to talk about that more granular weekly data, but it would give longitudinal trajectory over time of the student and then describe to families what that information means and how to interpret it. Thank you.
If I may add, actually that brings me back to the original question that Director Bullion was asking around what additional data sets. And I also wanted to emphasize intervention data, particularly at the K-1, 2 level that our teachers are looking at and as well as the classroom-based data that our teachers have access to that's more formative in nature and ongoing outside of, or in addition to these stopgaps, these oil change that Dr. Thomas was referencing earlier.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our next, thank you very much Director Zombus, this is very helpful. Moving on to our next item on the agenda for new business is the 2425 enrollment update with Director Fredrickson.
Thank you Chair Franz, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. You have in your board packet the current enrollment historical data as of the end of February. Let's see, we are still about three students ahead of where we were at the end of last year, but we're down 20 from October 1st, which was the official child count. If you look at that report in kindergarten, we currently have 576 kindergarten students. And as we look at the 2425 enrollment, we started the process about a month earlier this year because we've moved up all of our timelines for budget, but right now we have 425 kindergarteners enrolled. If you compare it to this exact same time last year, last year we had 357, so we're about 150 more than we had at this point last year, but we did move the process up a month. Overall, our projection for the 2425 school year was 8,580 students and as of last Friday, we have enrolled 8,394. So we're about 186 students under what we projected and our revenue was based on our projection of 8580. So we still have some work to do to get to the projected number of students that we have, but it's still February, so we still have some time to build up those numbers.
Okay, any questions?
When is the timeframe that it needs to be, is it by?
September, we need to have 8,580 to meet our revenue targets.
Okay, and you said you moved up the process a month?
Or just begin enrollment process.
Okay. And typically, when, when do you, when does it, when do we meet? Is it really, does it kind of keep increasing up until September usually?
Yes, it usually does. In summer, we gain a few kids. We have done the open enrollment students, which is a little earlier than we've done last year. So we were able to, for the most part, all of our open enrolled requests came, we gave them their first choice and we try to do that in order to keep them in the district. So we were able to do that this year. So we're hopeful we'll see some more students, but we're still down from what we've projected.
Given where we are today to what we are projected in prior years, even let's say March numbers, do you feel confident that we will make that enrollment prediction or are we, are we nervous?
I would like to say that we tend to be a little conservative, so I would like to say we should hit that target, but given everything that's going on, I will, I mean, we'll continue to watch it every month and if we need to make some adjustments, you know, you, the final budget will be presented to the board in June, so we still have some time to make some adjustments, but right now we're assuming that we'll come in at what we projected.
Okay, one more layer to my question Tammy. So when we do the final budget in June, is it typical that we've met the enrollment prediction by June?
Typically, yes.
Okay. That helps, thank you.
Questions? Thank you Director Fredrickson. It looks like we're actually from comparison to last year to this year, like you said, we're up just a little bit, so hopefully that's a good trend, a good projection trend. But thank you very much for this detailed, extremely detailed report and also the comparison to historical numbers at the same time. Next on the agenda is the discussion of the preliminary budget and board action will be asked for at the end of this. I also want to remind everybody in the audience that this is a very detailed conversation that we had at the previous study session and board members have been meeting with various administrators this week and submitting questions. That does not preclude those questions to be re-asked during this meeting, but I just wanted to let people know that this has been, this is not new data for us. We have been mulling it over for several weeks, if not longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Most of this is going to be the same data that was presented to you at the board study session, so I'm going to quickly go through the first nine slides just as kind of a refresher. A majority of our revenue comes from the state sources, both categorical and non-categorical, but we also get local dollars from property taxes and voter-approved referendum. The smallest portion of our revenue is from federal sources. Most of the dollars that districts get is identified in Minnesota statutes. The largest portion is the general fund, formula allowance, which is generated by our student enrollment. And in 2425, which is next school year, the amount that is set in statute is $7,281 per adjusted pupil unit and those formula dollars do not have restrictions on how they can be spent. We also have categorical funding in our general fund and they have very specific uses that are allowed for those dollars. And districts can only use those dollars for what that specified source is, you can't use it for anything other than that. I think everybody's heard about the large funding increases that were given to districts this legislative session and the challenge with the increases is that most of the dollars came with spending restrictions. The new dollars did not make up for continued inflation and some staffing shortages and it also included things like earned safe and sick time, family medical leave, some coursework requirements for students and then as we talked about, the READ Act. We're going to concentrate on the general fund today, but we also have two other funds that we do get revenue for, the food services, which is Fund II, and community education, which is Fund IV. We're projecting that the revenue for the 2425 school year is going to be about 117.7 million. But in order to balance the projected budget, we are going to need to reduce our expenses by about $5 million.
You went back on something and then you went back.
Yep, I'll go for, I'll just, hang on just a second. The following, the next slides are the proposed reductions that the senior leader team has identified. And if we look at the superintendent's office, there's proposal for $32,000 in reductions and that includes salary adjustments, eliminating some professional development opportunities and some reduced support for new strategic initiatives. We look at the human resources, they're proposing 109,000 in reductions. Human resources, the business office, both are proposing moving some expenses from general fund to food services and community education funds. We are- We are allowed to do that, as some of the work that we do supports those two funds. The, also, the executive directors of administrative services, business services, and academic services are all proposing salary adjustments. And also included in the HR reduction are reductions in recruiting, special projects, and moving the cost of the employee assistance program to UMR funding. The district is also experiencing lower class sizes than we've seen in the past. So many of our classrooms right now are below our targeted numbers. So we're proposing to reduce the number of classrooms at the K-8 levels to increase some of those targeted class sizes. But we'll still have classrooms at or below our target and discussion caps, and this will save about $1.8 million. The business office is proposing a reduction of 55,000, again, the salary adjustment for the executive director, removing some shared expenses to food services and community education, and reducing some professional development opportunities. Academic Services is proposing reductions of 285,000, again, the executive director salary adjustment, and then reducing a differentiation specialist and a curriculum specialist. Dr. Edwards is shifting some duties and responsibilities from these two positions to other positions in his department. Student Support Services is reducing about $1 million from the general fund, and that will be done by moving some expenses for the special education tuition billing to federal funds, which means that we can move expenses currently paid from the federal funds to the general fund, which then generates special education reimbursement. We're also not filling an assistant director position and reducing some of the staff in, the special education staff in some of the buildings. The Assessment Improvement Department is proposing reductions of 43,000, including reducing test facilitators in kindergarten and first grade, and no longer paying for ninth graders to take the ACT test. Operational Services is proposing reducing the number of custodians, resulting in savings of about 133,000. Communications is proposing reductions in the amount of 24,000, which includes not producing some videos, reducing printing, postage, and also reducing supplies. The Technology Department is proposing reductions in the amount of 188,000. They are proposing to sunset several software programs and gain some efficiencies in others. And then some other proposed program cuts that we are proposing are eliminating the coordinator position at MNCAPs and having an assistant principal at the high school oversee the program. And also, our, one of our middle school principals is retiring, so we will not fill that position and have one principal overseeing a dual campus. With all of those proposals, we have about $3.9 million in savings, which leaves a little under $1 million to solve for. We also could look at some revenue increases by increasing some co-curricular and parking fees. We also could charge families for the ACT test, but we would not be able to do that for students on free and reduced price meals. And some expense reductions, we could look at reviewing one-to-one device distributions. And then we could also targeted, target increase in some of the class sizes and some other targeted position reductions. So given all of that, we've solved for just under $1 million. And we are asking the board today to approve these reductions so that we can balance our budget to 117.7 million, which should match our projected revenue. Now, I can take, any questions?
I need to take a motion in a second for this before we continue. Okay, so by Director Crosby in a second?
Second.
Okay.
Tammy, can you reiterate what you said the last slide? After everything that you went through? Or maybe it's the second to the last slide?
Yeah, all of these reductions will still leave us about a little under $1 million short, so we'll still have to solve that. And some possible ways we will do that are reviewing some of the one-to-one device distribution and the increasing some of those targeted class sizes or some additional staff reductions.
In those two items listed on that slide, do we feel confident that we would make up that just under $1 million difference?
Yes, we will be able to. At this point, we're not exactly sure where that will look like. We have to kind of see where enrollment is ending up and what our current class sizes will be in the fall, but we should be able to reduce another million.
Anytime we're talking about cuts of anything, programs equals people often. I'm appreciative of each department going through and seeing what they can do at, yeah, I guess that's, I don't have any further questions.
I can also just note that I gave you a long spreadsheet that shows some of our revenues and expenses over the last seven years. And you can see that the percentage that we've spent in each of those categories, elementary education, special education, all of those categories, the percentage that we've spent year over year is almost exactly the same amount. So our distribution of how we're spending the dollars hasn't changed in those seven years. But if you'll notice that since 1920, we have been deficit spending. So the anticipation is that we will continue to see expenses exceeding revenues, just because of inflation, because staff salary increases, benefit increases. It's going to continue to go up. But as we talk about enrollment staying flat or even coming in less, our revenue's not going to increase significantly. So without making some of these, without making these reductions, we're also going to see reductions over the next few years.
I want to reiterate that what you're asking for from the board right now is to approve these reductions, but is not the final budget.
Correct.
You need this in order to continue budgeting for the rest of this, going into next fiscal year.
Correct. We want to start doing the staffing process. We want to get everything prepared for when we start school again, and so there's a lot of things that need to get done. So we would like to move forward with the process. And again, we'll continue to monitor it. If it looks better, we'll be able to have different conversations. But right now, this is a conservative estimate, and it may look better in June, but I don't want to take that risk.
You know, one of the things that, the history of funding, state and federal funding, has not been a good one. I think prior to, between 2008 and 2012, we have several years where there's absolute zero increase with almost a 4% to 5% inflation rate that hit transportation, utilities, things like that, things that are fixed costs. No matter how many people are in this room, we still need the lights on, we still have to pay for that. Starting in 2012, I believe we've got 1% per year, and then it slowly jumped up to 2%. But the net deficit from state funding compared to inflationary rates for public school system has actually had a negative 13%, I think, ongoing. Is that, is that something that sounds accurate?
Yeah, that's pretty cool. If you look at the chart, the inflation's here, and funding is significantly below that. Yep. And we've already been notified by, I think it's one of the utility companies, that they're going to have 10.4% increase in their costs for next year. We know that some of the contractors that we have are, because they're also hit with the safe and, safe and secure time, they're sharing that cost with us. So some of our contracts are going up, our insurance is going up. So everything, all those fixed costs, we're seeing increases and not getting any revenue to offset those.
I'd like to thank you, Tammy, and all the departments for going through this in such detail. One of the things that I step back and take a look at is, a month ago or so, we met with Finance Advisory Committee, you know, community members from all over our community that have come in, and they've tried to digest all of this information. And with that, I would say I would encourage anybody in the public to look at that expense history, because I think it tells a very clear story of just the funding of our district. It's easy to compare to other districts, but we have to look at our own district at this point in time. As we sat in those meetings, a lot of them are coming from corporate America, and I didn't hear a lot of, oh, aha, try this, right? It's just a very difficult model solely based on enrollment and funding that our state gives us. So as we look at this, I know it feels like we are just asking everyone to do more for less, right? And we hear it in our community, and then we're going to hear about, you know, class size targets, and we're going to hear about curriculum needs, and then we're going to look at just our overall fast bridge, and we're all going to jump to these assumptions and conclusions. But I would ask the community to look at it with a little bit of grace and take a, take a step back and pay attention to what you're seeing, because it's so true that funding hasn't kept up with all of the costs to educate our learners, and nobody wants anything taken away. And when I look at this, I don't think that we're just taking away, taking away and cutting. I think we're looking at how do we be fiscally responsible for our community? And then with that said, the fund balance at this point, I know this is, you know, a tentative budget, but if I look at the end of it, and we end up where we are about in June, you know, that fund balance could potentially have some areas for us to make some expenditures on some one-time funds and not wait for our state to give us a dollar for something that costs us 10. Like to say that. So I think there's, there's ways to look at it, but I want the community to understand that that fund balance isn't to hire and then fire or let go. So if there's ways to, even with technology, I know we're all, we don't want to talk about, you know, because it's good and then it's bad at the same time, but if it creates some assistance to our educators, I would like us to make sure that we aren't afraid to look at what those things are as we move forward. If that makes sense. It's a long answer. Probably rely on Marcus for some of that, too, but I just think.
Yeah, I think that's the important thing to remember about fund balances, that it is one-time money, and once you spend it, it's, it's gone. So, and that the fund balance is intended to be how you mitigate for risk. So we want to be very conscious of that. And with the board policy, I mean, there's a reason that there's a board policy for that, so we want to keep that in mind, that we don't want to spend all of our fund balance because there are some risks involved.
Tammy?
I've got several questions.
Go ahead.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I, and I do want to piggyback off of Director Burnick. This stinks. This stinks. This absolutely stinks, and there is no amount of sugarcoating that can be done. I know you know that, I know the departments know that, we know that. And I appreciate Chair Franz, you saying at the beginning that this, this isn't just the first time we're seeing this and we're making this heavy decision. This is weeks and weeks of meetings and trying to understand and get different perspectives on things, because it's so easy for us to see this on paper and not realize what this means, you know, in our district. So I appreciate all of the meetings that have been happening. A couple of questions I have when it comes to class sizes, and we talk on that slide that you have, I apologize, I don't have slide numbers, when we talk about the caps, could those change? Or are those, are the caps set in stone? Sorry, that is a question.
I may have Director Herman chime in on this one.
Thank you, members of the board. At this point in time, on that specific size about class right sizing, we are not proposing any changes to the class size target or discussion caps. That is us rolling up our projected enrollment based off of our enrollment this year and looking at our kindergarten numbers coming in and making adjustments within the current target and discussion caps. Because of our enrollment staying steady, and as you go up our grade level, your, your discussion target and cap increases by grade level, we're seeing some areas where we can cut some sections and stay within those, those current target and discussion caps. On the second to last slide, when we talk about potential for additional revenue savings, or sorry, expenditure reductions, that's where we might be looking at some targeted areas where we may have to talk about increasing the target and discussion caps. But on that size about right sizing, that is not adjusting any of those current target and discussion caps. It's just making those adjustments to sections within those numbers.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question on student support services. I didn't know, and we may not know yet, in terms of the FTE resource teacher, the five resource PERS, do we know what level that is yet? Or do we, or is that a?
Yeah. For, for the teaching position, it would come at secondary. I have 16 resource teachers, nine through 12, that's across Bridges, Laker Online, and the high school. So reducing one there would still keep them in an okay position. You know, their caseloads will go up, the numbers aren't going down, but I think that's, that's where it would have the least impact. PERS likely would be at the elementary, because that's where we have the majority of our PERS. We're pretty low on PERS at the secondary level. Where and exactly what that will look like will kind of depend on student need as we look at that.
How many do we have total?
Across the district?
Yeah.
Let's see, I have about 100 between resource and center-based, looking at that early childhood through high school. This would likely be in resource at elementary, where there's about 35 right now.
And then, you know, bringing up, looking ahead, Tammy, you had mentioned, sorry, Director Fredrickson, you had mentioned, you know, this, it doesn't stop here. It doesn't stop at the 5 million. It could be 8 million next year, and in addition to this. So at what point do we entertain a vote this fall and go to our community? I'm bringing it up, as popular or unpopular as it might be, but I look at the heartbreak of this at 5 million, and then looking at doing this again next year, potentially double this, and I don't want to do it, quite frankly. And so at what point do we entertain that idea of going to voters to help invest in our district?
Director Olstead and members of the board, I think that's a very good question, because we can all see how this movie ends if we play this out for successive years. And I believe there's a graphic that we've shared that, again, a lot of this is on projections and assumptions, and we have to do that. Nobody has a magic eight ball to read the future of where folks will be in resources and what the legislature will do or not do. So we have to utilize these assumptions, and again, rolling those out. I believe it was the fiscal year '29 that we would reach a potential state of statutory operating debt, where we will have come to a point where we don't have the resources, and we have to now partner with the state to put together a rebound, financial rebound plan to, to become solvent again in another, in about a two-years timeframe. It's just not an ending that we're striving to reach. We believe we have options before us. We believe we have options before us, one of which you just brought to the table. And so this is a conversation that we plan to bring to the board in a retreat to begin that conversation of what does that path look like and what are the steps that would be entailed if that is the will of the board to go to the community with an ask. But clearly, that's a solution that can be addressed. We also know the implications for not having regular funding and, and I think just it's important to share that this reality is not unique to Prior Lake Savage Area schools. We had our legislative advance, I think a couple of you are dialed into that. I was there in person with, you know, about, you know, 20 or so of our electeds and I think there was a bit of disbelief in the room of how are we all here? Didn't we just pass this historical funding? And I think a bit of reality came across many of our elected officials that what eventually crossed the finish line did not meet the needs of many, many districts across the entire state of Minnesota. So I, I believe that's why we're going to have kind of a tense policy session this go-around that's going to really set the stage for future legislative conversations because what just happened, we're very appreciative of the funding that we received, want to be very clear about that, and we were very appreciative of them at that legislative advance a week or so ago. And we want to have continued conversation with our electives, electeds so that we are not put into this predicament where we have a lot of un- and underfunded restrictions placed upon us that really kind of make us squeeze resources. Now, those of you who've been with us for years, our staff and our community, this was an exercise that we went through for many years in a row. Some of you might have been a part of those conversations if you were on the board back then, but going through reductions like this is not, it's not foreign to us. It's not foreign to any district. And I think there was a member of our Finance Advisory Committee that kind of had this discovery of, so this cycle just always repeats itself, you know? And when they kind of made that connection, like, welcome to public school finance. Yes. This is a very unfortunate cycle that continuously happens, which is beyond what we control here. That's a bigger legislative conversation in terms of how public education is funded. But, um, so we will be prepared as an administrative team to come to you all in a retreat to help begin shaping what that conversation looks like so that you all are informed as a board of what options exist for you all. And should that be the pathway forward, we will help frame what that looks like as well.
Thank you.
I have some additional questions I'd like to add. Um, yeah, it, it's a very grave situation. There's no doubt about it. We have some significant programs that are listed in here. We have our student services and specifically special education, MINT CAPS program. Bridges is another foundational program where without the specific key areas, our students don't have the supports that they need to thrive and to do what it is that they do and to reach their fullest potential, whether it's Bridges, special education, MINT CAPS, a very growing, thriving program all by itself. My concern is that by cutting the coordinator position and shifting those responsibilities to an assistant principal, you kind of create an environment where that person is serving two masters and will likely fail at both. Serving as an assistant principal for the high school and then also serving in this capacity as overseeing the responsibilities for MINT CAPS. That's problematic for me. I'll, I'll speak right from where I am. If there's an assistant principal that has capacity to absorb this work, why would that not be on the table to cut that position and retain the MINT CAP, MINT CAPS coordinator? Just as we wouldn't go out and cut the coordinator for the Bridges program because it's very focused, very dedicated to the students and the success of all those that are in those programs. Um, not really a question, more of a statement. Why would we not consider it rhetorical? And then looking at our, our special education, increasing the number of cases that our case managers would be responsible for, perhaps Director Chukka might be able to provide some insight here as far as what's the capacity that they would have to be able to absorb additional cases? Are we, are we, what's the unintended consequence by adding to their caseloads?
Well, there's always exposure, right? As we increase and ask teachers to do more with less. Right now, I mean, we're, I don't know how to answer that other than, you know, we're, we're at where we're at and we have the budget that we have. So I'm trying to meet the needs of the students within that budget parameter. So other than, you know, some of the things that, that we've put out there, you know, to, to what you said about the principal, same thing with special ed administration, right? Cutting that and cutting, cutting PERS, cutting teachers, every, there isn't anything that's going to feel good anywhere, not in special ed and not in, in the district.
Sorry. If I may just expound on that as well. So I think this kind of ties back to Director Olsted's question about just what, what's the long-term fix? Because we won't reduce our way out of this situation. And Director Chukka and I have had conversations that in the short term, and I'll be very clear as well, as much as we want to be away from classroom impacts, a district of our size, a budget of our size, the ripple effect is pretty wide. So there isn't anything in here that isn't going to have some type of impact throughout the entire system. And because we've unfortunately gone through this exercise in our recent past for many years, it's no longer trimming fat. We're trimming muscle, we're breaking bones. There's no way around that. So I believe we can address this, Director Velasquez, in the short term and absorb the caseload. My, I think what I would add to your question that we're questioning is after next year, when we know that the identification of students requiring support within special education continues to skyrocket. And, and so what happens a year from now? That's the unknown. But that goes back to then what's the long-term? Because we could probably say that about a variety of these decisions that we're bringing forth in terms of our recommendation. This year, we, we would, or for next year, we would make it through this in a less-than-ideal manner. I think subsequent years, it becomes increasingly compounded to the point where I mentioned fiscal year '29. So I hope that gives you a little more context to some of the conversations that we're having because everything's going to get felt and, and we've, we've trimmed what is trimmable. Now we're making deep, deep impactful cuts.
Um, I have a comment. Kind of to piggyback on Director Olsted's comment regarding going to the community. I think my biggest challenge is public education is government-funded. We end up having the unfunded or underfunded, underfunded mandates and we're having to figure it out. We, we prepare a legislative platform. I know we're not, like you said, Dr. Thomas, we're not alone in this across the state, maybe across the country. I think the eas-, I don't want, I don't even want to use the word easy. It, it's not easy to go to the, it's not easy to always go to the public. It's, where is the threshold? Like, when legislatively, we continually receive mandates that are unfunded or underfunded. I mean, what more can we do? We, we can have community come and we can vie for what we want at, at the district level, but the problem is above us. And so even our representatives that, that I'm in communication with, they realize this too. And so I think me as a board member, I'm thinking, how do I strongly, or how do I make a difference at that level? How can I advocate more than I'm, I already am? That's where my frustration lies because we feel it here. We're having to make these hard decisions here and we see what's going to happen year after year. And yes, going to the community is an option. It just seems that, where's the cap? Where's the, you know, that, when does, when does the legislative, where is more of their accountability? How, does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it makes sense and, and I guess a short answer is that not only for us, but also for our community. This, this also is where our community can take the conversation forward to our, our elected officials. Parent voice carries a, a lot of weight when it comes to our legislators, so, and our, and our reps. So I just encourage our community to be in constant contact with our, our elected officials to Vice Chair's Bullion's point, to help convey the argument of the challenge that how the business of education, if I may use that term, is governed at the, at the state level and how that gets passed down to the local level. And being, being, having local control is good in words. I think our community is seeing firsthand when local control is extremely restricted. So that's where I would be pushing for our community to really be advocates on behalf of our local community to not allow the types of legislative decisions that are kind of putting us in this predicament that we're currently in. I would say the and to that question or to my response is going back to the spreadsheet and maybe even some years ago, 27 or 2007 or so, I don't know when the timeframe that we were going, when we passed our last referendum, I don't have that date. Was it?
The, the 2017 one?
Seventeen, I said seven, yeah, seventeen.
And that was for building?
Well, we had an operating levy that we currently have right now prior to that. That's the one I'm referencing. And I think that's, that's when this movie began. And I just want to be, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is where we got, received support from our community and we, and, and left a significant gap in ongoing funding. So the challenge that we have here today with our current operating levy is that we are upwards of three times underfunded compared to other neighboring districts who have levies with their communities. And I know it's a balance, as you're saying, Vice Chair Bullion. At some point, we do need to figure out what is a better balance? Because right now, I think we're quite underwater and out of balance, leaving a lot of resources that could be coming to our students. Some of the conversation from our community this after, this evening, earlier this evening with our public comment around the asks that they are wanting, I'm, I'm kind of paraphrasing, that's, that's their value proposition. I get it. I share that value proposition. I don't share in the resources available to me as a superintendent that many of my colleagues in neighboring districts have based upon their local levies. And I think that's the challenge, I think, that we're going to have to have conversation about is how do we honor, I think, very credible values that we heard about tonight? You know, gifted education, differentiation, resources to support holistic, comprehensive reading curricula, paying staff what they're worth. I mean, all, all of those factors are important and I get it. And within the resources that we have, what can we do? And it's less than ideal. I'll, I'll just say that. It's less than ideal. So when we have to make priority decisions on what goes forward, given the budget parameters that we have, what's the sweetest lemonade that we can make out of the lemons that are on our plate right now?
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that, and I didn't validate these numbers with you, but if they were going to make us whole last legislative session, given the fact that we're one of the few districts that doesn't have a comprehensive levy, that the operating levy that was passed in 2017 did not cover the basic expenses of the new building as well as the existing, that it would have been, I calculated, 13% from the state unrestricted plus fully funding special ed to make us whole. That's not to move us forward or to keep us sustainable long-term. But the bottom line is there is a direct correlation between those districts that have communities that support them and do vote for these referendums. And, and we've seen them because we're, we're in that, we're in the, we're in the metro area where we constantly are pitted up against some of them. And that's something that we need to consider where our priorities are and what we're, what we're able to do. This is not a funding year for the state. We're not going to get any more money out of the state this year. And given the economy, we're probably never going to come close to what we need in the following year when the biennium does occur. So we have to consider that. We have to consider the fact of what we want to do for our students and what we can afford to do. It's not a balanced, it's, we're, we're heavily underwater here. But with that, I'm going to ask if there's any more questions and-
I have one more. It's more for the, for the sake of our community. I know these conversations have happened in the past and now it's on paper. Dr. Thomas or Dr. Edwards, the middle school principal, this is going to be new for our middle school community. And so I know, again, other conversations, whenever there's kind of budget discussions, this is always kind of brought to the table and now it's on the table. So I just, is there anything more to maybe add, more context there to provide for our middle school families, like what this might look like?
Director Olsted, right now, I have shared this information with the campus staff and based upon the actions of the board tonight, we would then develop a deeper communication plan, you know, beyond just the staff and what that would entail. Currently, the administration of, of the camp, of the middle school campuses are working with their respective teams, gaining things that they need to take under consideration in order for this to be an effective model. And that information will then be presented to me in terms of how we would then create that final administrative structure. So they're, they're in that data gathering mode with our respective staffs. And so as soon as I have that, I'll share more publicly kind of what that model will entail and the resources and supports, et cetera. So for example, I had a staff member ask me about the observation load. How, how would that be balanced out if we are down one building principal with those on high cycle compared to those of our probationary staff? And so how would we manage that? Great question, right? Those are the things, the nuances that we are working through right now. And then to be able to ensure the success of both middle school campuses with that singular principal. So more to come on that one.
Thank you.
Um, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on the proposed budget reductions to allow Director Fredrickson to continue on with the budget planning for this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That passes 5-1. Okay, um, next on the agenda is an annual resolution. This is an annual resolution. Although it comes right on the heels of our last discussion, I just want to remind the board that we do this every year to allow, uh, the district administration, um, to be able to provide the management decisions to discontinue and/or reduce programs and positions if necessary. Not sure there's anything else to be said. We do this every year. I'd like to take a motion.
Come in.
By Director Crosby and second by Director Velazquez. And this is a roll call vote. So Director Velazquez?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Olstad?
Aye.
Aye, that passes six-one. Okay, next on the agenda, oops, we have a, um... Where am I in the agenda? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. That we have a proclamation for the School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. And I am going to ask Director Olstad to read the School Bus Driver Appreciation Week, if you will. Find it? Sorry, one moment.
There we are. Thank you. Uh, School Bus Driver Appreciation Week, February nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes February nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four as School Bus Driver Appreciation Week and February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four as School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers ensure the safety and well-being of our students while transporting them to and from school. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential members of the Prior Lake Savage Area community. Whereas over one hundred and twenty Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers are employed through Barron's Bus Company and, oh, UC Student Transportation Company, my apologies. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers safely transport more than eighty-eight hundred students. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers travel more than one million miles total over the course of each school year. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers deal with many challenging situations each day, including inclement weather and traffic. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers are the first people to greet many of our students each morning and the last to say goodbye each afternoon. Therefore, let it be resolved. The Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to Prior Lake Savage Area School Bus Drivers for supporting the safety and sense of belonging of our students and declares February nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four to be School Bus Driver Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
And Director Delwell?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Franz, School Board, Dr. Thomas. Thank you for this recognition. Excuse me. Uh, I'm going to post two copies at the bus garages and, um, I know they will appreciate this, as do I. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. Okay, next we have the second and final reading of, uh, policies. I'm going to read off the policy numbers. We have policy four oh six, four oh nine, four oh nine point one, four fourteen, four sixteen, four seventeen, four eighteen, four nineteen, four twenty-eight, five oh six point one, five one five, five twenty, five twenty-two, five twenty-five, five twenty-five point one, five twenty-six, five thirty-one, six oh nine, six twenty-two, and seven twenty-two. These policies have already been reviewed and updated by our policy committee and they did, uh, they were reviewed and discussed at our last study session. So I'm going to ask the board, um, do you have any questions on any individual policy? Or would you like to vote on these as one packet?
I have a comment and, um, maybe I have more than one comment. As being new on the policy committee, um, in working through these policies, um, for this meeting, um, I was using a different lens than I had before. This past year, I've just read our policies and made, you know, gone through and whatever, um, questions I had or whether it be, um, punctuation, I would mark those and we'd discuss them at the meeting. And I'm, uh, in discussing with, uh, Director Herman, um, she had mentioned, Director Herman, can I, can I point it over to you? You'll do much better at explaining our conversation or reiterating our conversation than I will.
No problem. Thank you, Director, Vice Chair Bullion, members of the board. As we've discussed at multiple different board meetings when reviewing policies, also at the Policy Advisory Committee, um, one thing that has been identified as a continuous need is really focusing on consistency between all of our, our policies. A lot of it, um, with grammar, whether that's using the Oxford comma or not, capitalizing titles or not, double spaces, a whole bunch of those things that, that truly matter at the end of the day. But in terms of the scope and workload that the Policy Advisory Committee had this year with the four hundreds, five hundreds, and six hundreds, we've been really focusing in on content. And as we, um, are, are in a really great pattern of reviewing every three years, which is very, um, a really good standard, um, higher, better than, than some districts are going at, it still opens us up for this inconsistency because by the time we update the policies now, until we get through the whole three-year cycle, we have potentially new board members in place, potentially new people in my position in place, and then things get dropped as we're trying to go through consistency. So, um, one thing that I would like to bring forward as a recommendation, next year, the Policy Advisory Committee's workload will not be as heavy in terms of the amount of policies and/or the, the heavy subject matters when looking at the seven hundreds, eight hundreds, and nine hundreds. So proposing that the first task that the Policy Advisory Committee looks at next year for the first meeting is really defining what all of those formatting expectations should look like, going through all of our policies with only the lens of formatting, so we can bring them all forward at once in one, um, streamlined approach to really make sure that we're hitting everything all at once and not having to individually remember them every, every single time we update a policy and also making sure that we're doing it in the same timeframe instead of over a three-year course of time when we have those inconsistencies potentially in people in their positions. That opens us up for, uh, are we capitalizing titles, are we not? Or, you know, the whole, that whole gamut. So, um, I would like to propose that as an option to address this, um, concern that Vice Chair Bullion brought up, um, to me today, but also that we've discussed as a board and also as a committee, um, over, over the past year.
I can speak from the, being on the committee when we first started. This was a hot topic of the, uh, formatting and, and we did make significant changes to the formatting, including things like getting rid of titles that didn't have anything underneath it, moving the statute references down to the bottom and adding in revision dates, et cetera. But this is, this is something that needs to be looked at, not only in aggregate because also the way we review policies, but also, um, um, because we're reviewing them by number but not by, as was pointed out, by content. So, um, but yeah, this is a learning period for the policy committee, so thank you very much. But I, I believe that we had discussed this before, so this is great.
Yes, thank you. To add, I don't know that I finished with my con- context in that, in preparing for tonight's meeting, going through these policies, I actually was, um, doing, I was reading through the policy and then I was, um, looking at MSBA model policies. And I hadn't done that in my previous year. And so when you have that added context of, of MSBA's model policy, it can create more discrepancy than I would have had just reading it. And so that's when I reached out to Director Herman. So, uh, thank you for, um, articulating the, that, um, desire to kind of go through everything and, because consistency really does matter. It makes things, I don't know, it, it matters. So I appreciate that. The, another comment that I had was specifically, um, based on, um, policy five twenty-four and four oh nine. On unacceptable uses under, um, under that policy, A, there, unacceptable uses, and then it says A, and, um, then number one. In that bulleted item, um, my question was, is there definitions for those, for tho- for that number? And Director Herman, would you be able to share, um, kind of what you shared with me? With the, with that bullet point or that number one, it is a, a topic that is being brought forward, whether it be in books and curriculum, parent concerns, community concerns. And so, uh, my question to Director Herman was if there was definitions, um, to back that and, and if you could share. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bullion, members of the board. So with a lot of the different, um, terms that are utilized in our policies, we also steer clear of adding definitions that are in statute, whether that's, um, state statute or federal statute, to avoid any liability in the district when they no longer are accurate or they're conflicting. Um, one good example with those definitions, if you look to the legal references later on in that policy, when you're looking at the Minnesota statute on, um, internet access for students and then the federal statutes for Children's Online Privacy Protection Act or the Children's Internet Protection Act of two thousand, each of those, depending on the context of what we're utilizing those terms under, it may change the definition that we name, that we would be looking at. So that's why we, as a Policy Advisory Committee, emphasized adding those legal ref- references so individuals can look back to those statutes, whether it's state or federal, to, um, have that ability to dig deeper when, when, um, the context allows for it, but also to limit the district's liability for having incorrect definitions that may or may not be in conflict with state or federal statute, especially when state or federal statutes themselves sometimes have differing definitions and we have to dig a little bit deeper depending on the context of the situation on which statutes apply to the situation.
Thank you. Those are my two comments. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, do you want to vote for all of these as one? Okay, so I'll take a motion, which I hadn't done yet.
Come in.
And a second?
Second.
By Director Velazquez? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero. And I am voting, by the way, I was just really quiet. Okay, so, um, after policy, we now have administrative reports.
Thank you, Chair Franz, Board Directors. Um, just giving you all, oh, one second here. Couple of things I want to talk about. First, I would like to talk a little bit about our strategic planning process and, and where we're at to date. So we, we kicked off, and this is more of an update for our community as well. We kicked off our, uh, core planning team meeting, uh, a month or so ago. And then just this month, we opened up with our, um, uh, public engagement sessions with our community. And, uh, we have our, we have our calendar spread out across a variety of different dates, days of the week, uh, times of day, just to make sure that we are catching our families' schedules and allowing folks to participate in a variety of different venues. And so, um, I want to thank all of our, uh, all of our community for coming out. And I think it's really been a great opportunity for them to participate in really good conversation around their hopes and dreams for our district in the next five years or so. And I would say we have had about twenty-five to thirty that have attended our first two sessions. I think we had about thirty-five or thirty-six, actually, at the high school. And, um, and I think we've got four overarching questions that we're asking our community. One of them is, uh, what do you like most about our district? So if we're going to put together a strategic plan, um, what would you not want us to remove because you like it so much? I think, uh, another question is, what are some of the unforeseen challenges in the next three to five years? I think there is a, a question around, um, what is our greatest, uh, opportunity? So this is kind of where could we grow more? What area, or, and/or if you want to look at it from a, a point of weakness as well, like where, where could, where could we really improve? And then, uh, fourth question is, what do you want to see in, in a graduate? When they walk out of our doors, um, what are the skill sets that you want to see, um, from, from our students? And so it's really opened up some really rich conversation and just deeply appreciative of, of the community coming out for that. Just a quick plug and reminder, um, all of our students are also welcome. That was a question that was asked. And so we have advertised this with our students as well, but just want to let students know that particularly our, some of our middle schoolers and high schoolers, but certainly any students, welcome to be able to have a conversation about what are your hopes and dreams from a student perspective. So I just want to put that plug out there for any of our students, um, who are, who are dialed in. We have some upcoming meetings. We convene again on the twentieth, that's about a, a week or so from now. That will be at Spring Lake Township Town Hall. That'll be our town hall there from one until three o'clock. And then we will have a series of kind of round two engagement sessions as well. And that's, uh, March twenty-third from nine to eleven at McCall Pond, March twenty-sixth from nine to eleven at Club Pryor, and then April ninth from six to nine, um, at Prior Lake High School. And I will say that one from six to nine, just because of the time, we know that we're probably interrupting family dinnertime and so we do have a light meal that's paid for through a state grant and we use our own in-house food services, so the resources go back into, um, our fund too. So thank you to, uh, Emily for supporting that and your staff for cooking that phenomenal wild rice and salad and brownies.
Amazing.
Yeah, I think, I couldn't taste it, but I'm hearing it's great. Darn COVID symptoms. But, um, so I just want to remind our community of, of that and, uh, and, and do look for, um, ways, I mean, we're, we're trying to promote this through our businesses and so families and staff. If you go to our website and click the strategic planning link, please make sure you're promoting this in your social spaces, um, whether it's your place of business, your social media. I'm just trying to get as many people out as possible. And, and I do, well, and I will say, um, I, I, I know it's a happening conversation, so everybody wants to be, be there and be a part of that. I'm also wanting to ensure that we bring balance to bringing, um, new voices. So if you have come out to this event in the past, you're more than welcome to attend. I would encourage you maybe to monitor your airtime so that new voices can come in because, uh, we want to make sure we're getting unique conversations, not echoed conversations, i- if that makes sense. So, um, so thank you for allowing, um, a balance of new and continued conversations to occur. We also are going to be, uh, doing our annual survey coming up. Uh, this is our stakeholder survey. And so that window will be from February twenty-sixth to March fifteenth. This is our second year for this new format with our partnership with Studer Education. So I just want to make sure that, um, our families and our students and our staff are aware of that window. So again, your feedback matters and it really has helped, um, shape some of the initiatives and decisions that we are making today. And then I would also just like to recognize our Minnesota Teacher of the Year candidates. Education Minnesota, um, recently announced Prior Lake Savage Area School Teachers, Heather LaRue, who's a third grade teacher at HRE, and Sherry Seidensticker. She's a kindergarten teacher, actually, at JP. They are among one hundred and fifty-nine candidates for the two thousand twenty-four Minnesota Teacher of the Year Award. I believe they were also in our local paper as well. So let's give them a very local cheer and lift them up to, uh, really, um, uh, put us on the map. And so thank you both for being outstanding teachers and thank you to all of our thousands of teachers. You're all outstanding and, and obviously some of you get recognized and can possibly compete at the state level. So best of luck to our, our two candidates. And over the next few weeks, uh, that list will be narrowed down to semifinalists. And then in March is when a panel will choose a group of finalists and then there- in March is when a panel will choose a group of finalists, and then there will be the annual Teacher of the Year banquet, and I believe that will be May 5th this year. So a lot of stuff happening and a lot of positivity happening as well. So those are my superintendent reports for the evening.
Any other administrative reports? Okay, so our student rep, Dan Bergen, is not here with us tonight, so we're going to continue on with Board reports. Anybody have any?
We had our Teaching and Learning Committee meeting right before this meeting, earlier this evening, and we had kind of a mini community session with our, for our strategic plan, planning, and it was great. It was, it was a really great conversation, same questions, same four questions posed, really rich conversation, and I'm so glad we did that. So that was earlier this evening. So another plug, I guess, for the other community meetings coming up because they're just, they're really, really great to get your voices out there, and I would echo as well, bring the kids and let's hear what they have to say about their next three to five years in our district. And then a shameless plug for Legally Blonde. Legally Blonde, the community education musical, is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I looked a few hours ago, there are still tickets available. These kiddos and the staff have worked really hard on this and I think it's going to be amazing. So plug to attend one of the, one of the musicals.
Thank you. Last Friday morning, I went to SCALE, which is Scott County Area Leadership, and unique to our county, which is awesome. And we had some good, Dr. Thomas was there as well. We had good presentations from three nonprofits in the county who do excellent work with a lot of at-risk folks that live in our county. Notable to me, after listening to them, was Scott County Treehouse. They partner with our district and various other districts around Scott County, doing work with at-risk youth, but one of the big topics is around truancy and providing support to kids who are truant and have needs in that area and support groups and such. So I know they have them in each locale that they're in. I don't know if they have a support group in our high school. It sounded like they have them in a couple other high schools, but they have, that might be something interesting to, to discuss. And the other, the other presentation was given around the 2050 vision for Scott County and what that looks like. They're having, you know, their first discussions around that, which was also informative. So.
8:00 AM tomorrow morning, robust Finance Committee meeting on the tentative budget for 2024.
I had the ELAC Early Learning Advisory Council Committee meeting this past week, and I learned a fun fact that Minnesota is the only state with ECFE, Early Childhood Family Education, in the whole country. I, I think I asked three times in a row, like, in the whole country? She's like, yeah, the whole country. And so it is 50, they're celebrating 50 years of that, which I am still in, you can tell, I'm still in awe over that. As a parent that did ECFE classes with both of my children and how much I loved them, I think that's incredible. So go Minnesota for ECFE. Another thing that I learned this past week is that they have partnered with CAP Agency, who does wonderful work in, in our county, to do food drive, food drives on early release days for the Westwood and Edgewood families, and the goal is that one day we can have that, supporting all the, all of our elementary schools and their families. But they're doing great work and I really enjoy that committee a lot. I mentioned earlier that I went to the math, the Bridges Math Night, one of them, and I just wanted to say, it was something, I'm really grateful that I had the time to go to it because I can listen to things, but without actually seeing the, what the students are doing, it's hard to put it into perspective. It is much different. And so with that, I can understand some concern or fears based, you know, that arise with it, listening to the different parent feedback and the presenters. I, I took tons of notes, I, I took two pages of notes, and I felt like what I came away with from that, after listening to the parents and listening to the presenters and the gentleman from the U of M that also helped us understand what it was about, was that the math, that math program seems to allow for a deeper understanding of concepts, which is really foundational, and I, I appreciated having come to that conclusion. I, I kind of checked in with one of the principals that was there that night to see if I was way off of base, way off base in, in coming up with that. Because I know with anything new, there's, you know, challenges that arise and, and all of that, but I do, I do have hope for that program. I, I, I'm, I look forward to watching that roll out.
All right.
So on January 16th, we had the Organizing Committee meeting for Southwest Metro Education, not Education Foundation, for the Southwest Metro Governing Board. Had great presentations on some of the new initiatives that are coming forward there. They have an apprenticeship in partnership with the other three intermediate districts to try and build capacity really for teachers looking to enter into that specific space, specifically setting for special education. So a two-year, one of the, the tenants of the apprenticeship is that people will come out with a two-year associate's degree with a teaching licensure and a pathway towards a bachelor's degree so that they can continue to move forward and grow in this space. This is in partnership with the other three intermediate school districts with the Department of Labor and Industry, Minnesota Department of Education, and Public Education Labor Standards Board. And then also partnering with Mankato State on that. In conjunction with that, there's a pipeline grant that Southwest Metro is pursuing that basically funds this apprenticeship program, so it's a yes and. There's about $4.2 million that are available for them to be able to pursue this initiative, so it's, sounds like it's going to be an outstanding program. Another initiative is the Drive for Five Grant. So at Southwest Metro, they do more than just special education, they also do a lot of, of technical training and skill building for their students in both adult basic education as well as their career in technology. So they're developing additional certifications for COMPTEA, so a Computer Training Industry Association. Did I get it right? Close enough.
Close enough.
Yeah. Boiler Operator, Certified Nursing Assistant, Pharmacy Technician, Medication Aid, and they already have an EMT program, and they're going, with the benefit of this specific grant, they'll expand that curricula for EMTs so that adults can actually get into the program rather than just their regular mainstream students. A lot of great initiatives, a lot of great opportunities for students that don't necessarily see college as their pathway, to continue to grow and develop and really build on some great job experience while learning so that they can easily enter the career field once they're done with the program. And then Policy Advisory Committee, we meet this Thursday, 7:00 AM. Looking forward to it.
As far as my Board report, basically, I went to the AMSD Legislative Session on February 2nd. Well, I didn't go to it, I logged in online. Director, Dr. Thomas was there in person, and it was quite informative about what our school districts are actually experiencing due to budget cuts and also providing their legislative priorities to our, to both parties, and then we got to hear from both representatives of our parties in our state legislature and their responses to questions as well as their comments. So it was very, very informative, and we are not alone in many of our, many of our situations here. The other thing that I did is on January 26th, I went to the Municipal Legislative Commission, which, for Region Two, which is the area that Prior Lake participates in, and that was also, only on behalf of cities, a discussion with legislators, and I went with our mayor, our city manager, city councilman, and several representatives so we could hear and ask questions to our legislators. I also attended the Going Away Party for Dr. Brown at Bridges, and that was very, very touching. It's, it's amazing what one person, their impact is on so many students and teachers and other administrators and even parents. So that was very, very impactful, and I'm positive that Principal Donner not only has some big shoes to fill, but also will do a phenomenal job holding down the fort until Mr. Brown returns. And that's it. With that, we're going to adjourn this business, business meeting and transition to a closed meeting to discuss the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. So I'd like to take a motion to adjourn, to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0. We will take a five-minute recess and go into closed session.